Good evening and welcome to the Proctor Select Board. If you'd all please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first order of business would be to review and approve the agenda.
It's on move.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And to... A motion will be in order to approve the minutes of September 9th.
On move. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Kayla Rousenowski. She spells her name K-A-Y-L-A. Under Guest President.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
And also on page two.
Yep.
Kayla Rousenowski. Again, with the Kayla. And then the seventh word in that sentence.
Yeah.
Should it be addressed any questions?
Probably. That would work with those letters.
And then on page three.
Yep.
Under Town Manager. Public Work Foreman. Should that be met with, will?
I'm sure it should be.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then under Old Business. That first bullet, the last word, should that be to resume negotiations?
Negotiations. Yep. Okay. So with those corrections, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Open public comment. Who would like to speak? Would anyone like to speak?
I guess I will first.
Okay. Can you just state your name for the...
My name is Chris Turner.
Yep.
I'm here to get some clarification on a town ordinance that I've been reading through and had a concern. So first off, addressing the whole how Newton Street is a nightmare. That was mentioned at the last meeting.
How Newton Street is what?
A nightmare due to the water situation that you raised up last meeting. I'm trying to figure out where if a house does not have an individual water shut-off, what parts of the main water line are the town responsible for? Because the town ordinance does not specify if the town does not have an individual water shut-off, what is and is not covered.
What do you mean by covered, I guess?
So certain towns go to the first shut-off. Certain towns cover the main water line to the curb stop. Our town ordinance here in Proctor states it's truly first to the curb stop. However, if the house does not have an individual curb stop, where that gray line, what is actually covered by the town? So for instance, I... My main water line has been leaking into my house since December 24th of 2023, which the town, the water department has been aware of. I have gotten we cover to the first shut-off and I have gotten leave covered to the individual curb stop. I do not have an individual curb stop. So what is actually covered and what is not? Like what is the town responsible for and what am I as a homeowner responsible for in that scenario without the individual water curb stop being excessive?
Well, if you have no curb stop, you're still... You're responsible from the curb stop to your house and the town is responsible for the main. Unfortunately, if a break, if there's a leak and it's on your property, then that's up to you to take care of. And if we had to get to it and you had to do work, the town would have to shut the main off.
So even if the main water line is completely galvanized? So for instance, like the state of Vermont's been wanting the galvanized pipes to be removed. Newton Street's entire main water line is galvanized.
Right.
Does that issue a factor into the fact that that's going to have to be replaced in the near future anyway?
Well, it depends on where the leak is. If the leak is on the person's property, then it's up to the person to take care of it. If the leak is within the water main, it's up to the town to take care of it.
What I'm stating is that if the entire main water line, including what's in the street and the pipes leading into the houses, if they are all galvanized, which they are on Newton Street, and the state of Vermont wants galvanized lead piping to be removed.
Correct.
One, am I responsible for the piping once you guys finish the main water line even though that wasn't... That part wasn't a burst? Let's say that part is galvanized and needs to be replaced per the state of Vermont? Is that something you guys are replacing or all town owners that have... Or homeowners that have galvanized water pipes leading from the main into their house, they are responsible for that?
Well, the service line inventory that was just done by the state, they're not mandating that you change it out. They want to see what is in people's houses and the pipes. So there's no mandate there. The issue with you or anybody on Newton Street would be that if you did have something wrong on your property and you needed it fixed, be repaired, we'd have to shut the main off in order for you to do that or we'll have to put in curb stops at all those houses.
Okay.
So and that's not just putting a curb stop in. That means the pipes, I think, in Newton go like down and then just direct. So it's hard finding spots where you can actually put curb stops. It's not just putting a curb stop in, it's actually putting piping in and stuff. So it's a much bigger project.
Which leads to my second thing, which is the water pressure on Newton Street for not just my house, but almost every single house on Newton Street is horrendous. And even though I've talked to the guys at the water department...
Does that mean horrendous, high?
And if you run a washer, you can't run water out of your sink. If you're running a shower, you can't...
Oh, it's low. Okay, all right.
But when you contact the guys in the water department, they say, well, our computers say that it's fine. This... And when this happens, it's not just one house, it's the entire street. And this has been going on for at least two years now. So I'm trying to figure out what resolution can be there because we've had boilers burst. We've had three houses have their boilers burst in the last three months or hot water furnaces burst. So even with the water suffer and everything we've been told to do to prevent these issues, they are still occurring consistently.
Right. And I think they've talked to you about that, that one, the pressure won't create those bursting. And you're the only one who's come to us with any kind of complaints. So no one else has talked to us about pressure of their water or anything. And they've tested it and they seem to be okay. So I think you said you had an adjustment, right, to make it so you could look?
We all were told to put adjustments in.
Right.
And that the lady I'm speaking of cannot be here because she has cognitive issues where she cannot be here. She was displaced out of her house for over a month because her entire water system burst. And it's not because her piping's bad or anything like that. Even the plumbers that went in through Brock to redo her entire system even said it was because of the water pressure. So there's some... There's some lack of communication or inconsistency.
Well, it seems kind of odd that something would burst when the water pressure's so low.
But that's what you're saying. But the people that...
Right.
I'm not saying that it's an everyday thing where there's a water pressure issue.
Right.
It is a sporadic... Might happen once a week, might happen a couple times a month.
Right.
So that's what I'm trying to figure out is being at the end of the service line, being Newton Street, what's the... I know you said they did a water pressure test, which is great and all, but they could come out the next day and have Newton Street's having a water pressure issue and it could be a completely different scenario. So my question for you and the select board is what is a resolution where I... The entirety of Newton Street doesn't have to worry about one day they try to go and run a sink and it doesn't work? Because that happens consistently on Newton Street.
Well, I think the guys... I'll tell the guys again, but I think everything on our end has been properly, you know, examined and looked at, other than, like I said, doing a whole restructure of Newton Street and trying to create curb stops so that if a curb stop is like, say, at your house and you're having the problem and it's on your end, then that's where your plumber needs to figure it out. If it's something that's on every house and we can't figure it out, then, you know... But they've gone down there numerous times now. I think not only this year, I think last year. I think they've been there several times.
So with you saying that, that makes it clear that this is a continuing issue, that we've done water pressure testing and... Because you even said they've come out multiple times and not just last year.
Well, it's not a continuing issue, it's a continuous complaint that we've gotten, so they've gone to check on it. And honestly, no one on the street has come to me about it or them.
And not to keep going in circles here, but as I mentioned, the majority of the people on Newton Street cannot make these meetings in one way or another. That is why I'm here because we do all... The last time I called, it wasn't just my house. The town, the water department couldn't come out until the following day where the water pressure then returned. But my three kids couldn't take a shower that night because I had no water pressure. If I'm paying water bill to have access to that water, if I'm paying... I've had $10,000 in damages just from water issues alone from the fluctuation of water pressure. If this, you know, if this continues to happen, there's got to be a resolution here where you said they did water pressure testing. Great, that's awesome. So they came on a day where I had water pressure. What about a day I don't have water pressure? There's got to be something here because I'm not the only one on Newton Street. I'm the only one calling on Newton Street.
Well, just for the record, three other residents on Newton Street have come to meetings before and attended meetings. So they're capable of coming to meetings. That's three households on your street that have come to meetings, so they're very capable of it.
We have...
Every single time they've come, not one of them has complained about anything with their water.
For the record, there are seven households on Newton Street. That means you got less than 50% of the people. That means that the people that may have been affected, like one person that wanted to be here tonight just had back surgery. He can't get here. The other person that's been affected has issues that they cannot get here.
Right, okay. But seven houses, four people show up, that means three don't. By choice or by... They can't. But I said those four households, well, the three excluding you, never have complained about water pressure or anything with their water, whether in a meeting or whether just in conversation, never.
So what I'm understanding is you're discrediting my concerns because other people haven't made this?
No, I'm not discrediting them. We've several times gone there and talked to you about it.
What needs to happen? If other people are having water issues, they need to be calling when it's happening. One person on the street shouldn't be calling for all the households. So if someone, one of the other seven houses is having water pressure, they need to issue... They need to call at 10 o'clock and say that there's a water... They don't have pressure or the pressure is extreme so that in that capacity, there's some way to document also to see if there is a particular time when this is happening, a particular day or something like that, to try to, you know, collect the data and then track the data to see if there is. But if only one person's calling and saying it's happening to multiple people, there's no way to have any continuity with that. So if you're in contact with these other people that are having water issues, I would encourage them to call the town manager as soon as that happens so she can record that and we can... For the guys, so they can start tracking it.
And also whoever the plumber was, have them contact me so my foreman can talk to him too, just to see what they're saying.
Yeah, the last time it happened, they actually, my plumber was there when the water guys came out.
Okay.
They had a good 20-minute conversation on my phone.
Okay.
So they are aware of the situation.
Right, oh yeah. I know.
I'm sure. The problem that I'm trying to get at is, okay, let's say for your guys' sake, it's one person having these issues. I'm not going to argue with you on that aesthetic. That's still one person on that street that's having issues and it's not my piping because I've had my piping replaced multiple times from multiple incidences. So what I am requesting as a Proctor resident is you guys to authorize looking into more than just a water pressure test. Because if, like you said, I'm the only person that is complaining about it, let's say, and we've already done water pressure tests and we've done this and done that and it is still happening, that means something else is going on. And I think we can all agree on that. I'm not... I don't like to be on the phone every day and be like, hey, I have no water pressure. Like, that's a little insane. But there's got to be a line where we're like, okay, we've done water pressure tests and this is still happening. I think that's fair to ask.
Right. And I'll talk to them tomorrow to see what your plumber said because I don't know how well your plumber looked into a leak within the line or not, if that's causing the issue. I don't know. Because I don't have any reports as far as your plumber goes.
All right.
So if you want to email me his name.
I'll even give you his phone number.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. Allison has joined too.
Okay. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak? Okay. What about... Does she want to speak online?
No, I think she's up for the...
Okay. All right, good stuff. Any good stuff?
Fall festival is this Saturday in town, so hopefully everybody will come. Have a lot going on, music all day, fireman's barbecue, other people serving food, animals, kids' games, things like that, fireworks later that night, and also the rink will be open for roller skating, so.
All right. And paving started?
Almost finished.
All right.
The following week, the following Saturday is dump day and that's a good thing, so you can clean out your garbage as well as hazardous waste. So just keep that in mind, it's from 10 to 1 for the hazardous waste. Or, excuse me, the dump day's 10 to 1. The hazardous waste is from 11:30 to 1.
And there are tickets downstairs. The first visit to the dump is free, second is $20 and you have to purchase the $20, your second ticket ahead of time instead of down at the dump, so.
All right.
Question.
Yeah.
Does it say dump city you're getting?
30 yard.
A lot?
30 yard.
Why don't you get a point? Same point.
We're getting 30 yards, three of them. I'm waiting for Casala to confirm, so.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Everyone had an opportunity to sign the bells?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. In your pocket, you also had a map from Vicki, the PTO chair, for the color run. They came last year and asked to do it. It happens in...
May, I think. May. May 3rd and the rain date is May 10th and it's from 11 to 2.
Okay. Any questions about that?
She plans well ahead of time.
What was to the time?
11 to 2.
11 to 2.
Any concerns, questions? All right. And they submitted a facility use, so you're good with that? Okay. All right. Rutland Regional Planning Commission.
Hi, everyone. I'm Greg. I'm from the R RPC. We're in the middle of updating the Rutland Regional Plan for 2026. We are in phase two of our community engagement for this planning process and going a step back, so context here. The Rutland Regional Plan is an eight-year governing document that is both a strategic plan for the region, a guide for the R RPC as an organization, and also a document that influences new development in the region by way of Act 250. So for development that falls under Act 250, the regional plan is considered in guiding that development as to whether it's approved, disapproved, or modified in that development process. So initially, earlier this year, we were going through phase one of our engagement process, which, through which we asked everyone in the region, both through presentations to select boards and through events within our communities about what they wanted to see in the specific planning areas that we work within. And now we're in phase two, which is where we are asking you to look at the draft policies within this plan and respond with your feedback as to your approval, disapproval, or other comments on these policies. So if you go to page two of this, you'll see that as part of this phase of engagement, we're going back to every town in the region to directly ask the select board for their feedback on the policies and the plan as a draft. And also we'll be completing five pop-up events throughout the region and two feedback sessions at the R RPC offices. And really what we're hoping for here is for your feedback via a very quick form that can be found at rutlandrpc.org/plan2026. And we're hoping for select board feedback on that as well as feedback from the public. So the goal here is to gather your reaction to what we learned from you in phase one and then seek your thoughts on the draft policies in the plan. So in this packet, you'll find at the end all the draft policies and there are many of them, so I'm not going to go into detail about them during the meeting right now, but I hope that you'll look at them later and respond to your feedback through the form, which again, for the public, can also be found at rutlandrpc.org/plan2026. You have any questions immediately right now, just at this phase of the planning process?
So this is all online if people want to go on?
Yep, this is all available online at the R RPC website.
Okay. Great. Okay. Questions, input? All right. Sounds good.
All right. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a good one.
You too. Thank you. All right. Moving on. Letters of interest and appointments to Park and Rec. So we have two letters of interest for Park and Rec and then one letter that's just...
Ramsey? I think your letter is like of interest but more like serving on the outskirts, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Like willing to help me like with emails, things like that? The whole marketing piece and any technical piece?
Yeah. I would back committing to anything more about knowing the future, so.
No, no, that's fine. I just didn't want to make sure. Yeah, Albert?
I was just going to ask, how many positions are we looking to fill?
There's three that are open. There's five members on a committee.
Okay.
So you had the letters of interest from Allison and Sarah. Questions? A motion would be in order to appoint them?
I will make that a motion to appoint Sarah Harrington and Allison Quixal-Pasek.
Second. Did Allison want to say anything, do you think?
No.
I don't know. Allison, did you want to say anything?
No, but thank you so much.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Awarding contracts for co-managers for roller and ice rink for 2425. You have a letter in your pocket from Rachel and Jason Ellison and Amanda and Jeffrey Duchesne.
Yes. And they came forward after I had received an email from Megan and Brian Canucci on September 8th that they were stepping down from the rec committee and also as the rink managers. So then we had a Parks and Rec committee meeting and at that time, they had, actually after the meeting here, they had suggested that they had interest and we had a Parks and Rec meeting, they came forward and said that they were willing to run it as four of them with their spouses. And they also had a couple volunteers come forward too to help them with the rink, so. So they wanted us just to accept their letter of interest as rink co-managers as well as ice co-managers.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Will you say this is for the ice rink?
The skating rink, roller rink, ice rink.
Roller rink and ice rink.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Do you need a motion?
Make a motion to accept their letter of interest.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Fire station. Josh?
Yes.
I don't see your pocket in your hand. Oh, you have it there. All right, so we've all read it and we see what the options are. Your... Why don't you take us through your thoughts?
My thoughts is we should be looking at the temporary fix at this point to get the trucks back in there for winter as there is no super location in town to storm in and the town garage does need the garage. Those trucks can't get exposed to the salt. That would happen to be in that garage unfortunately. That will also give us time to come up with a solid plan for either fixing or whatever needs to happen to the building itself.
Okay.
So I did reach out to the engineers because I had a couple questions just regarding the temporary fix and just making certain that if we did the temporary fix that we'd be able to park the fire trucks in there.
Yes.
So because I just didn't want the fix being done and then say, well, you still can't park them in there. So he said the temporary fix would allow the fire trucks to be parked inside. The duration of the fix is challenging to answer as the wood will continue to deteriorate. Anecdotally, the structure was built in the late 70s and only now is experiencing slab movement. So what I did from research and I think we even talked, it could... The temporary fix could last up to 10 years. So it's not like a temporary fix of six months. So I think if we do it, it would at least allow them to move the trucks back in there for a safe period of time while we kind of figure everything out long-term. Because I think if anybody, I mean, this could stay and just be like, wow, we're lucky. Or down the road, it could get worse and then you're talking hosp that's going to just keep climbing.
Yeah, talking to a couple of the concrete people. Safe bet for the repair for temporary would be two to three years and have a plan in place at that point. And to me, that's a reasonable situation to get back, get anything back to somewhat of a norm and having it so we can actually utilize that building.
All right. And the engineers said if we decided to move forward with the temporary fix, that they'll get somebody to give us an estimate for the cost.
Okay. I did think it was just kind of weird in the report where it talked about like there was no settling of the building or anything. I mean, did they talk about why, you know...
This isn't the first time we've been through this for this building.
Well, I know, but when the marble all came off and that had to be refaced, they didn't think that was part?
So we can't access due to the energy improvements. You can actually go upstairs in the building on the second floor.
Yeah.
And the two side beams, you can see where the floor is separated upstairs.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it got covered when they did the energy improvements.
Okay. Because I just thought that they acted like nothing had ever happened in his report and so I just thought that was kind of...
They were not the engineers in the last project.
Right.
Which I think is part of the problem.
Okay.
Harbor Valley was the original engineers that did all the front apron, all the asphalt work that had to be done the last time.
So when they look at all that information, I mean, do we think that's going to make a difference on their suitability?
Well, the asphalt and the concrete apron were dug out appropriately back then in '05.
Right, but what you're saying, like upstairs, the issue is it's been covered, that when the marble slid off the front face and all that, I mean, that just kind of seems like maybe that might have been from settling.
It could very well be. We don't have...
Yeah.
Part of the problem going forward, what after we look at it for the full repair, is going to be the depth of those side walls.
Yeah.
And the movement of the ledge that it's sitting on.
Yeah.
We won't know that until they get in and start doing some actual exploratory.
Yeah. So do we think they can do the temporary fix here in enough time before cold weather?
That's what we're hoping for. We won't know until they send it out to a bid and how soon someone can actually respond to that.
Okay.
And I'll get back to him tomorrow to let him know we decided to go that route, so hope, tell him that we need it sooner rather than later.
Right.
Who's the engineer?
Right now? Who did the boring work?
The boy king.
The boys and king.
Did he recommend pumping slower again?
Yes, that's the temporary fix.
That's what you come online?
Yeah.
That's the way to do it.
So do we think they can do the temporary fix here at enough time before cold weather?
That's what we're hoping for. We won't know until they send it out to a bid and how soon someone can actually respond to that.
Okay.
And I'll get back to him tomorrow to let him know we decided to go that route. So hope, tell him that we need it sooner rather than later.
Right.
Who's the engineer?
Right now? Who, who did the boring work?
The boy king.
The boys are king.
Did he recommend pumping slower again?
Yes, that's the temporary fix.
That's what he come up with?
Yeah.
That's the way to do it?
How many bids are required?
Well, he's just going to get an estimate right now of the cost. What, he's going to just have somebody check and say, you know, this is what it would probably cost to do this process. And then obviously whoever he seeks is going to probably put a bid in and then we probably get a couple other bids. I'd say three.
We're kind of on a time constraint now.
Right.
Yes.
I mean, as the weather gets colder to, to do what they're saying to do, so.
I don't know who's available. If it's just Lamont or...
Right. I'm sure it's limited. I think it's limited from conversations.
Yeah, they have to get it done.
So it seems like next step is let them know tomorrow. They'll give you an estimate and then go right out to bed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or like you said, if there's somebody that does this and pretty much only one contractor that does this.
Yeah, then to book them to...
Yeah.
But I'll just email everybody and let you know what he says too, so.
Sure. All right. And then do we think once this is done, Josh, then that you guys are going to, I mean, with Judy, I would think maybe have some kind of exploratory committee as we book them out going forward and...
Once the project is settled, we'll start developing a plan on what the next step entails, what the costs would look like, what are we going to be required to do?
Right.
Because if, when they tear out the floor, that means we're tearing out the staircase that goes upstairs because that's on that slab.
Okay.
And that's where we get into structural modifications. And with that, we now enact ADA and fire safety.
Right.
And those costs are cheap.
Right.
And that's where we need to make a decision at that point. Would we be better off selling the building and building new?
Right.
Or sinking in a bond issue of X amount of dollars to bring the building up to last 150 years?
Right. Okay.
And that's where we, that'll give us the time to be able to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
We're figuring if it all looks downhill, even if we wanted to go this build tomorrow, we're two, two to five years out.
Sure.
There's no way around that. But this will give us that time to actually go forward and look at it and be able to say, okay, we want to take a step back and look at a different avenue.
Yeah. So I think at this point, the conversation really should be with Josh and Judy to move the process along. I mean, it'll be nice to know what the dollar amount is, not, I don't know, nice, but it'll be interesting, I guess. But, I mean, I think the goal right now is to move as efficiently as we can as we're going into cold weather. Would you want to add anything, Kevin?
I have another reading story.
He came in very authoritarily, so I didn't know if he had some.
No, there's just, I mean...
Yeah, so that we're going to go for the temporary fix and start that process tomorrow then? So we can move it as long, as quickly as we can. And so the board, if there's only one company that's doing it, the board is okay with just getting that contract and going forward with that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Anything else on that? All right. The share expenditure report?
I added that just because we're kind of nearing budget season. So I figured you guys could take a look at it just to see kind of where we're at and to kind of get in your head like some of the figures and balances and things like that, so.
Any questions?
Well, just one. You know, it was nice to see and good to see the town's position at this point in the year. But on page two, that top item, Proctor-Armstrong Fund.
That's not a fund that, that's a grant fund. It's a trust fund.
Okay.
The money just goes through the town.
Okay.
Yeah, these kind of are just all expenditures that are out there once we get into the budget. And you'll have like the actual budget, like we've used the template for that. So you'll see each department and stuff broken out, so.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Motion would be in order to move into the Board of Water Commissioners at 6:35.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Received a letter from the State of Vermont Environmental Conservation Drinking Water and Groundwater Division accepting our operations and maintenance manual. As long as we continue to meet the conditions specified and contact information is updated to reflect the designated operators. I don't know if you remember when we did the asset management plan, one of the things was is that we had to have directors in place for the water and wastewater, which we do, so we complied with that, so. So that's a good thing.
All right. Anything else?
Nothing else.
All right, we'll have an update for water accounts the next meeting?
Yeah, they've kind of been out straight with other issues.
Yeah, okay. All right, motion would be in order to move out of Board of Water Commissioners and into...
Mr. Peterson?
Yeah.
Did you allow to look at the channel and power tank?
Did I look at it? No, I didn't.
I mentioned this a month ago and had someone go and look at it.
I know. I have not had an opportunity to go up and look at the water tank.
I believe my guys, the public works guys have.
Yeah, the DPW guys went up and looked at it, so. And I, they didn't have any concern, so. What's your issue?
What's the matter? What's the matter again?
The backside of the, the backside is starting to wash out and the ground's starting to come against the water tank. That's a no-no.
Rogan on the backside of it?
The hill. Should be looked into. It's not a good sign.
All right, we'll speak to the DPW guys again and see. We'll have them take pictures when they go up next time. Would that be okay?
Yeah.
Okay. And we'll have the, we'll try to have those for the next meeting. All right, anything else? All right, motion would be in order at 6:38 to move into the Board of Sewer Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
There's nothing to report on that this week.
Okay. We can move out by consensus back into the regular SLUC Board meeting. Everybody has a sheriff's report. And any questions on that?
I wanted to ask about the sheriff's reports.
Yep.
I was controlling the website, which is still a different issue.
Yeah.
I only saw sheriff's reports from 2022. I didn't see any from last year.
We don't, I haven't posted anything ever for sheriff's reports. We always print them and put them in the packet, but I've never posted them. I get them online through the sheriff's department.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
There's some stuff from the town specifically for 2022.
Right. I don't know, I don't think you'd have access to the sheriff's department either.
Probably.
Right, because I think it's a special program that you have to have access to.
Oh.
But I wasn't aware that we've ever posted them, really.
I don't know. They might.
Before it's with, like what they did on them and everything.
Yeah, that's what these do.
And they're, we can post it downstairs.
I mean, some are generic, I mean, some are generically, it's hard to figure out what they're saying they do. But it's all code, but, yeah, but we can post them too if you'd like.
I would, if you could.
Okay.
Apparently there's still a problem. Maybe they can spend some time watching people go through the stop sign by the library.
As well as down...
That could be every day.
Yeah.
Speeding down East Street and West Proctor Road. There's people come to me about both.
So I've got a lot of complaints on West Proctor Road, people speeding. I've had complaints on South Street of people speeding. And I've called the sheriffs and made them aware of it. I've dealt, I've dealt with one of the neighbors who I know who talked about the radar sign. I've been trying to track that down because we have that speed radar sign that you come into town. And I have no data whatsoever from it, never have.
Oh, from this one?
Yes.
Oh, I don't think it, I don't think it collects anything.
The one on North Street did.
But that was the sheriff's.
That was the sheriff's. And this is one we purchased. So they said sometime there is a thumb drive that's in there and you can get data, but I don't think so. I've reached out to the people we bought it from, because I think we bought it two years ago.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to find, track that down to see if there is any data. But I think what happens is when you initially put them up, it, it does jog people and they kind of slow down.
Yeah.
But after a while, they don't. Now, because of where I am, I can agree that people fly through 60 miles an hour into Proctor and it's when they know police aren't on duty.
So I did have a couple specifically mentioned, like the trailer trucks going down East Street.
Oh, yep.
You know, down to the plant.
Tractor trailer, yeah.
Tractor trailer, yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, just all, all times a day, because I asked specifically what time.
Yep.
And, and using their, you know, their brakes and everything, so.
I can hear it.
Yeah, I'm sure you can.
But I've asked them if they can just be more alert on those, you know, coming in to town and stuff like that. But they are, I mean, it's like late at night, people flying through the entrances, the exits of Proctor. And they're, some are going...
Oh, yeah.
Pretty fast. A couple get caught that you see, but I think, you know, they're just making them aware of it and seeing, you know, trying to figure out what we can do to inhibit people from, from speeding through there. But they, they do respond. When I, you know, call them and stuff, they get right back to me, so.
Are there thoughts maybe to put speed bumps on the crosswalks near Fons, near Grove Street? And then maybe near the library that may, that may prevent...
You can't put speed bumps on main roads.
No, that's state road.
Okay, you can't do temporaries either?
Yeah, I've checked with them too, because there was a couple of side streets even that were like really bad. And they said, and then they said you get into kind of concerns unless you put the really, you know, like people will just fly over those anyway if they're really low.
No, you have, you put the like big ones that are big enough for crosswalks and you have the signs.
Right, yeah. But on the main roads, I said, you, no.
It's a good idea.
But I got a call today because somebody was in a, there was a car that was in a parking lot and somebody was in it sleeping. The car was running and there was concerns. So I called the dispatch and right, right after I hung up, Mary said they pulled in. And I said, geez, they must be down the street. But they did. They came and checked and they told the person to move along. I was just worried something was wrong with them, so. But they moved them along, so. They do, when they're around, they do react to things and, you know. It's just they're not always here, so. They're on the right side of the town when something's happening on the other side of town, so.
Yeah. Okay.
And then just one other thing on the report, Lisa. This one's for 22 and a half hours. It seems to be a pattern. You know, a few weeks ago, it was 17 and a half hours. I hope we can get back to getting there.
It's not, I think it's their system. It's not, because when I reach out to them and ask them to send me one, it's a full report. And I don't know what's wrong with their system. It's, it's only, like I put in two weeks periods and it won't, it won't generate them out. And I don't know why. But then I read, seek out them and ask, and he said, no, everything's, all the reports are in. And he'll send me the total hours and it's like 40 hours. So I don't know why, what, I don't think their system's like probably the best. It might need some upgrades, but...
Now, are they contracted? Is it for 40 hours per week?
Yes.
Well, it's kind of split it and then share with West Proctor.
Okay, so it's 40 hours between Proctor and West Proctor?
Yeah, it's supposed to be that we have 24-hour coverage because they're...
In both?
Yeah.
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 And when they have more officers, it was better because they had one here and one there, you know, and then they kind of crossover if they needed help and stuff. But like if they're here and they get a call in West Rutland, then they go to West Rutland, so. And I know they were just down another officer not long ago, so.
All right, Town Manager Report.
Okay, mosquito spraying was done on 9/18. The Florence Road has been paved. Pretty much the whole section that we sent out for paving has been paved. We ran into a glitch today because down on Pleasant at the intersection of Eden, Wilks hit one of our manholes. And when it popped up, the guys went down to try to fix it and the whole base inside was tipped. So it wasn't even set in there. So they took it out and unfortunately, the hole is not all brick and mortar. It's like clay. So a good, I would say a good two feet was clay and it's just, you know, falling apart. So they couldn't really replace it. They couldn't get in. They thought they could get in and just re-brick it and stuff, but they couldn't because all that debris around there was falling in. So we got Ricky Reed to come out and help us and the guys...
He's been rising for it. Can he smell rising? They saw him.
So the guys, they were still there when, I met them at 4:30 and they were still there when I came tonight. They're still working. So they said they should be pretty much finished. It had to be, I think, excavated out to scoop that and then rebuild around there so they could set something in. And the reason they wanted it done today is because Wilk wants to pave tomorrow and finish it. Because there's that section like coming off Florence Road and going down Pleasant didn't need, didn't have the second coat, so there's a good, a good lip from Florence to, you know, Pleasant, North Street.
And what about the sides? Who's doing that? Us or them?
We usually do that, yes. Yeah. And then I reached up to the state about striping it because they had already, they just striped it like a month ago and I said, oh, we just paved it, so. So they'll come back out, stripe it again.
And then to answer your question, John, he may have done that, Reed, only because...
You can hear the argument. He's probably going Park Street.
Right, but it was a time constraint on doing Park. Had to get it done now instead of wait, you know.
That's the question, what are you doing?
Right.
Also, on the pavement, the pavement you said is almost done. Did they take compression tests? Can I see the results on that?
Compression tests where?
On the pavement.
But they haven't even finished yet.
Okay, so when it's done, can I see that?
They have it, yes. All right. I mentioned last time about starting on the annual report and I would like suggestions from the board or about dedication and also the memorial. So I thought if we did it as a memory, a memory to Ben Curtis and then dedication to someone else in the town for the annual report. So I don't know if you want to talk about it now or if you want to just kind of mill it about in your head soon. Let me know next meeting.
Well, I think it's an appropriate thing to do. It's a good thing to do.
Yeah.
Because that's not the question though, is it?
Well, that was my suggestion and then that we need a dedication as well.
So we sent, like, like one suggestion was Mr. Coons, doing it to him.
I agree with the memorial for, for Ben, but I'd like myself to think about it a little bit more.
Yeah, no, I'm just throwing that like...
Yeah, no, no, no.
Right, but that's, yeah, something that you dedicate it to.
Yeah.
VLCT Annual Meeting and Town Fair is October 1 and 2. I don't know who's going, if any of the SLUC Board members are going.
I signed up to go on 2, but usually we have a voting member to, now it's just virtual. Is anyone attending the virtual business meeting?
I am, I'm doing the, I'm...
You're going to vote for us?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, I know usually...
Because I'm on the two boards too, so I figured, but I'm doing it all virtually.
Oh, you're not going to, oh, yeah, on the first.
The second I'll be there.
Yeah, okay.
Are you going, Bruce?
Yeah, I think I will.
Okay. I don't know, Albert, Jay, I don't know if you guys signed up, because you have to sign up.
I did, I did. If I did, it would have been in the 12, you know, the power and that was paid for.
No, we pay for it.
For it, yeah.
The town pays for it.
I plan to vote at this point.
Town is seven.
Yeah. Okay. All right, again, I talked about the complaints of excessive speed on West Street. That's where most people have contacted sheriff for patrolling that area more. October 3rd, I have a tri-town path teams meeting. And then there'll be a second virtual public meeting, October 12. And then there'll be a second virtual public meeting, October 23 at 6:30 PM. So that'll be here and it'll be virtual, so it'll be like, we'll have Zoom and stuff.
Oh, so the other three towns, like before.
Yeah.
We got them out.
2651 West Street to have asbestos removed on September 30. Reached out to the owner's niece. They will be required to remove the remaining debris in its entirety within 60 days. So I don't know if that's going to happen or not. There seem to be some concerns or issues with trying to get somebody to do it for them or the money for it, so. But once the asbestos is removed, then actually all the other debris can just be moved without worrying about asbestos, so.
So they know that after the 30th, they have 60 days. They received a letter or you just?
I talked to them on the phone. They received a letter also.
That's what that.
I reached out to the lawyers who represent on the foreclosure for the auction property at 9294 North Street to have authorization to discuss the delinquencies on the property. We received the paperwork, but we didn't receive payment for delinquencies. So I emailed, got authorization. I called them today and got their voicemail and their mailbox was full, so I couldn't leave a voicemail message, so. Because that's over $18,000, so.
And is someone already looking there again or it's vacant?
The same people are still there, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And then I already mentioned about the radar sign, trying to get information there, so. That's it.
All right. Any questions for Judy?
Lisa.
Yes.
Did you guys sign up on the sidewalk on Main Street?
Did we sign up? No, the SLUT board did not sign up on it. It was a grant project that, well, I feel that Judy can answer because I think she worked with the state.
Yeah, so we signed off on the final project for the work that they did, but it's still pending because we need to get permanent easements on a couple pieces of property.
I can't believe that you tried to choose a tunnel park and you see the weeds and the junk on the, between the sidewalk and the road that Ricky Reed did. I just cannot believe it. You people are going to shame yourselves. That's the main drag to the town park. That's disgusting. And I'll bring up one more thing and then I'm headed on. I talked to the town manager quite a while ago about these people doing some weed eating. And she told me exactly on the phone.
Doing some what?
Weed eating.
Weed eating, oh.
She told me on the phone that every time they mow, they do weed eating. Well, if you go down, everything is, let me go, if you go down by Holden Street, there's a crosswalk and there's a safety thing for the kids to stand on. You can't even see it, the weeds are growing so high. And also in front of John Salzkowski's house, all right, with that marble stone wall there. That's unbelievable. And these guys drive through there at least four or five times a day and they can't see that?
John Salzkowski's house?
John Salzkowski.
Where exactly?
Right here.
I know where he lives.
On the corner, like he just walked across the crosswalk from the library. They don't mow that little swath along there.
Yeah, but you can't really mow it.
Well, or nobody.
There's a stone wall about this high that runs through town. It's right next to the road. The weeds are this high. Matter of fact, they've been there so long, they die. And that's right to Main Street. I don't know what these guys do all day, but.
Well, I know when I mow my lawn, I mow it right to the very end, even if it's the town's right of way.
Weed eating. They go by it every day.
So like the base?
The lawn's through town.
That. Are you talking about the base of the wall or the top of the wall?
No, he's not on that wall.
The wall, the whole wall.
I know which wall he's talking about and the.
The whole wall.
The little.
On top of the wall though, are you?
The whole wall, all the way.
Okay, that's not the town, that's John's responsibility.
No, it's the town.
No, it's not. Town's responsibility on top of the wall is his, it's his property.
I'm done playing games. It's time to go forth. And I can't believe that's that bad. It only takes 15 minutes to cut them weeds down between the road and the wall. And then just on top of the wall, the weeds are growing to the stones. And that's supposed to be a safety thing for all the farms, all right, where the kids get on that little thing there so it separates it from the road, from the parking lot, and the weeds are this high. They go by it every day. How can you miss it?
Okay, anything else, John?
No, because I've had enough.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, I got problems with, you give a guy okay to put a driveway on my property. We have issues there.
No one here gave anyone anything, so don't just talk in circles. Well, you know it didn't.
Well, you have a different story from you to turn this on.
Oh, okay.
And then going farther, but I'm just saying, little things like that stick off. You know that. Albert, you know it, you want to buy it.
Now, you said that we should be ashamed. Well, I was going to bring that up about, you know, the South Street sidewalk during old business. I mean, there's a process and it was going to be brought up and I am going to bring it up in old business.
And if I had that contract, you'd be on my butt to dig it up and put grass seed in there.
Well.
And I've been working with other towns and they would jump on me right off the bat saying, that's not grass seed, that's weeds. And I worked for a lot of towns, Pittsburgh, all these towns, and that's true. They're moving ahead. Look at Roman City, look at Roman City they have done.
I don't want to go after night, but, okay.
Yep.
Albert?
Are we on old business and new business?
Sure, yes.
We're done with the town managers before.
We are.
And I was just going to say, I noticed, you know, on South Street, you know, the sidewalk project, you know, the weeds.
Oh, I noticed.
And I would like, you know, because the season is getting short, you know.
But I was thinking maybe if people mow those or weed whack it, once you got it down and raked up again, then you could like reseed it. Or at least it would start growing in more instead of being, you know, gangly. But that's a people's, that's their property, that's, they mow that.
Yep, yep.
But he did, he did put seed down. I saw it. I thought he had hay and seed.
And beyond that, you know, where they have it, you know, there is very little grass coming out, you know, so.
But no, it should be, it should be cut down. At least flattened out, you know.
Yes, but I just don't think there's any seed in there that's going to germinate.
Right.
You know, whether they get mixed, that's.
And I don't know, I can check with him because I don't know if he threw seed on the edge, you know, on the other side of the sidewalk, on the people's property.
Yes, and they backed that there, you know, so that should be seeded also if they can.
I can run talk to him.
And then I just have one thing. The member, citizen on West Street came to me about 48 West Street that they really would like to have a tax sale and asked me about it. And I talked to Judy and she said, perhaps if we got a petition, how do you feel? I think we might have more of a force to proceed with a tax sale.
Tax deal.
Yeah.
Adam Rogers.
Why, I don't understand. We can petition the town clerk to have a tax sale.
We just have a petition saying we'd like. Not a petition, just a letter saying that so many people want a tax sale, just to try to get a tax sale. Because.
If, are they delinquent? When I think of tax sale, I think of it's a delinquent property.
I don't think anybody is. Yeah, it's abandoned. It's basically abandoned. It's a, it's a eyesore. I mean, and it's, it's a health hazard too, huh?
No, not a petition, but just to show support, we want this.
Just a request by more than one person.
Right. I mean, how, I guess.
There's no, the wire shut off there. I mean, it's, you know.
Our ordinance doesn't cover a situation like that?
Well, that lies with the town clerk though, the tax sale.
Right.
That's why we need a letter.
And they have two properties that should be tax sale for that same order.
Okay, so they are delinquent, so they're the outside for, okay.
But on taxes or just water and sewer?
The one on Kane Street is water, sewer, taxes. I believe the one on West is just taxes because, well, the water shut off. I don't think he's paid that either. Obviously he's not because he doesn't have water and no one lives there. It would just be nice to get them.
Maybe we could just have a conversation with them. It seems a little adversarial. I don't know, maybe.
Right. No, and I've mentioned it, I mean, I think she's mentioned it too before about tax selling it. I just think it needs to be tax sale.
Okay, well, maybe we could just have a conversation about that and the other one and go from there. We can report back at the next meeting. All right, anything else? All right, anything from anyone that's here? Or online?
I guess a question about, my name's Randy, basically, just for everyone. A question about the contracts that go out for, for like who we provide contracts to for the town. Like, we mentioned the rank managers earlier and stuff like that. Are there provisions in those that speak to, I guess we'll say like legal or police business that may be detrimental to the town? Like if someone has some type of issue with someone in the community and there's law enforcement called, is that shown in terms of like their contract if they have some type of complaint or some type of citation against them? Does that disqualify them from working with the community if there's a community, like a sheriff's report?
Like if they have a record or something?
Yeah, yeah, like if they have a record, they get a record while working for the town.
Right.
Like community safety, I'm thinking.
Right, right. I mean, certain people they do background checks for, but not like, like our lifeguards don't have background checks done.
Sure.
Yeah, you know. I think a lot of it's just, like in this town, word of mouth if you know somebody that had something. But if background checks are required because of the specific job, then if something shows up, then it would raise a red flag as to what it was, you know, what the extent of that was.
Okay, yeah, I just think like anyone that volunteer coaches, volunteer, like rank managers that we may have some type of contract with.
Right.
It may be nice to have updated kind of background checks every year.
Yeah, and usually they do. If they come to us already and they're like in the school systems, then they've already had background checks.
Right.
A lot of them. So, yeah, and that.
But the background checks are usually at time of hire and they're not.
Yeah.
Performed after the fact, so.
Right, right, yeah.
Prior to.
Yeah, so if you have a prior, then no. It's like a pre-existing condition, right? If you have it, then maybe it might be an issue, but if you get it while you're there, is it an issue?
And I'm not sure that everyone that coaches in town has been background checked. I'm on.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know.
I mean, I know it. P Y L, it didn't use, so, I mean, I, and I don't know about youth soccer, I have no idea, but most people that coach are people that are known. And the other pieces, usually background checks, particularly in schools, because you're going to be one-on-one with the child. I don't think any of our positions are at a time when you're going to be alone with, alone with the child. So, I mean, I guess.
Yeah, it's not just about with a child, it's also about with other members of the community and things like that.
Sure.
Yeah, just.
Yeah, I don't think that's something.
More curious than anything.
Yeah, and actually the Leagues, the Remount Leagues of Cities and Towns, because I checked with them once on this too and they said usually, again, like Lisa, it's on a one-on-one basis with children.
Yeah.
Not so much adults. Adults are working together and stuff like that. Or like we do it with, you know, when our guys do CDL, have CDLs, we do background checks to make sure they own DUIs, you know, and stuff like that. So that's when, you know, those kind of background checks do take.
Okay, yeah. Again, nothing like specific. It was more just like, since we are doing things that go out with, you know, these contracts for the rank or whatever else we may be doing, just was curious on what our policies are on that. And then another question I had, someone had brought up something about a house being an eyesore. Is there a blight ordinance or blight rule in town?
There's like a junk, yeah, ground maintenance and junk.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
And we issue letters to people whose properties are way out of, but not, doesn't get met with much enthusiasm or results, so.
Sure.
An eyesore and what we get?
Someone mentioned that it was something.
No, she was talking about the West Street property I think.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't know, it just, I had a situation in a former town where I live where we had to do a blight ordinance on a neighbor because their, their side yard and our yard, they turned it into a junkyard basically. And so we had to issue a blight ordinance and I was like, well, is there something like, now that I have issues with any of my neighbors or anything like that now, but more like town in general.
Yeah, there's junk ordinance and it tells you like how many vehicles you could have that are on license.
Like if they're not right.
Yeah, what can be viewed from the street.
Yeah, yeah, so technically someone could have whatever they want. They could just have it behind a fence.
But this particular property's been vacant for years, so it's just kind of, well, you know.
And those policies or ordinances should all be on the website, so.
Yeah, I, it was just something that came up during this, so, yeah.
All right, anything else? Anybody online?
There is, but anybody online have anything to add or comment? Don't think so.
Okay. All right, motion will be in order at 7:06 to adjourn.
So are we going to do executive session or there's?
I don't think there's any need. It's just on there if it's needed.
I just put it on the case.
We could put on there in parentheses, if needed, or something like that. All right.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You are adjourned.